I will call the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors regular meeting to order on December 5th, 2016, General District Court Room, Edwin R. Shields, Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, Mr. Hunt, please.
Mr. Smithers has asked me to do some roll call and some votes tonight. So, Mr. Barber, here. Mr. Hagerman?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Mr. Barksdale?
Present. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, we will have a moment of silence. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're down to item five on the agenda, items to be added. We have two changes to the agenda. The first one is, we want to, we need to add the end declaration of emergency, and I'm going to just take the time to read that. Due to the recent rainfall within Pennsylvania County, conditions have improved enough to end the declaration of emergency, which restricted the outdoor burning of woods, brush, et cetera. So, we want to add that to the consent agenda. And the second change is, we want to remove the Pennsylvania County Animal Shelter update. We want to remove that from the agenda. With those changes, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we add to the consent agenda the end to the declaration of emergency, the burning ban, and, under the regular agenda, remove the update on the Pennsylvania County Animal Shelter.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blackstock and second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, raise your right hand. And it's unanimous. Thank you. We're down to the hearing of citizens, but just before we go any further on that, ladies and gentlemen, I am pleased to let you know that Mr. David Smitherman, our new county administrator, is present for his first official meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. And I would ask you to please join me in welcoming him to Pennsylvania County. We will be kind. Okay, hearing of citizens. I have the sheet. Perhaps somebody missed it or came in late or after we started, so I don't have any names. But is there anyone who would like to speak under hearing of citizens? Now is the time. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the added item. Second.
Motion by Mr. Barber and second by Mr. Warren. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your, Mr. Correction, Mr. Davis. You're sounding like Mr. Warren. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Lucky you.
Okay, item seven, presentations. We have Mr. Don Thomas, who is with Wingate Appraisals, and he's going to provide an update on the 2018 general reassessment. Mr. Thomas, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chairman Barksdale, members of board. On behalf of our company, we would like to thank you once again for allowing us to be of service to your county. I prepared a few brief remarks about the status of the project, the reassessment project that will be effective January 1, 2018. But we've been pretty busy on this since about mid-year. And since then, we've completed market studies, calibrated our model for residential evaluation, interviewed and hired clerical staff, assembled the whole workings of the reassessment office. We actually began property visits about middle of the year. And we have also accomplished the training for the Board of Assessors. That would include their orientation to the process and the FOIA COIA training that is a requirement as well. So, they are ready to go and to begin to actually review property assessments. Our role in this operation is to recommend to the Board of Assessors our best interpretation or estimation of market value for each of the parcels moving forward. And, of course, their role is to review our findings and concur or revise. So, that's where we are with that aspect of the project. As of today, we've visited approximately 30 percent of the parcels of real estate. The total parcel count for Pennsylvania County is right at 50,000 parcels. So, we've completed about 15,000 visits as of today. And that means we've got a lot in front of us. But again, we've got a few months to do that in. So, we feel like, we feel comfortable that we are on schedule barring any catastrophic weather events that might come up, that might delay a lot of the visits. But as it stands right now, we're comfortable with where we are in the project. Would like to give the board some sense as to what areas of the county that we are working in and we have visited. If you strike a line somewhat north of Chatham, with the exception of the Gretna Community and the Smith Mountain Lake Communities, we've pretty much visited the properties north of that line. So, that gives you an idea of where we are with our visits and what stage of the county we're working. We're steadily working southward toward the Danville area. That's pretty much the status of the project as it stands today. Would like to kind of depart from just the status report and just kind of give you a desire, if I could, and that is, we know that there's a lot of parcels of real estate in Pennsylvania County. If you have a constituent that's aggrieved about a previous assessment or doesn't feel like something is acting quite right, by all means, please point them in our direction. We don't pretend as though we'll be able to do 100 percent accuracy through this process, but we can still strive for that. So, we're anxious to hear problems, and we'll try to figure out whether we've got a problem or not, but we're anxious to hear those. So, please point those folks in our direction, and we'll do our best to at least hear what they have to say. Now, whether we can satisfy may be another, maybe another topic. But anyway, we'd be more than happy to evaluate what we hear. If there's any questions from anyone, I'd be more than happy to take a minute to answer anything that, in the way of any inquiries or questions.
Does the board have any comments or questions for Mr. Thomas? Mr. Thomas, you've mentioned 50,000 parcels. Is that up or down or the same as the previous assessment?
You'll see a slight increase, but only by virtue of what we call property divisions or splits that occur. I don't really, I'm not prepared to give you an upward number of the previous landbook total, but it's slight, slight increase, very slight.
And the second thing is, would we get in the way if anybody on the board wanted to do a ride for a few hours or a day or something like that?
Of course not, of course not. As we all know, the Board of Assessors is a public body that meets to review properties. And, of course, we seem to have room in the van for some. I don't know how many. But a lot of that is dependent on the number of members riding. Of course, we have a seven-member board, four members is a quorum, so as long as we have four members present, we'll be conducting business. And so, additional space would be available, I guess, as first come, first served, perhaps.
And we also publish a meeting notice, so if there's more people than room for the van, we would have an agenda where they could follow along. I don't know how beneficial that would be for them, but we have to afford them that right under.
Sure.
Thank you, Peter. Mr. Blackstock?
I happen to, the area that you're talking about, the northernmost tip of the county is my, basically my area. And I've saw your company's vehicles in the area, and I've actually talked to some of the assessors. Is it any reoccurring questions or issues that you're running into when you talk to the citizens about their property? Anything sticking out?
Well, of course, everyone wants to know what the assessments are doing. And it's a little early for us in the project to be able to address that. You know, most people will say, "Well, you're probably going to increase the assessment." That's not automatically correct. You know, it's a broad answer, but the truth of the matter is, with each of these assessments, they're situational. You don't have a real strong upward curve or downward curve in the real estate market right now, at least that's our impressions. And so, it's almost situational to the individual property. So, some will go up, some will go down, and some will stay about where they are right now. And that's kind of a non-committal answer, I realize, but that's the reality of the situation. So, a lot of people are wanting to know what's going to happen with their assessment. And the problem with the best answer that we can give them as the reassessment office is that we'll notify each property owner in the fall of next year as to what the results of assessment are, and they'll have ample time to contact our office if they have any concerns at that time. So, it's not probably a good idea for us to speculate on exact numbers back to the property owner at that time, if we're out the field, perhaps.
I will add to you that your assessment that showed up at my property and farm, I was very impressed. I did not mention to that person that I was on the board. And he wanted to see the buildings. I have a lot of older barns and different things as a farm, but I was very impressed with the detail and the questions that he asked.
Thank you for that.
And I think that's important. And that's one of the complaints I've heard from citizens in the past, is, well, they drive by and write something down. Well, he didn't drive by my house, I know that, or my farm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Any other comments, questions? Mr. Thomas, we really appreciate the update, and thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Thank you.
You're free to stay or if you have to go, that's okay.
Well, I was going to leave if it's found with you folks, and if anybody could suggest a route back to Roanoke where I'll be less likely to encounter a deer, I'd be happy to hear that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock.
Okay. We're at still presentations, item eight. Next, we'll have an update on the Danville Pennsylvania County Community Services Annual Report. It's going to be made by Dr. Julie Brown, who's a member of the DPCS Board of Directors. Welcome, Dr. Brown, for being here with us.
Thank you very much. Chairman Barksdale, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Smitherman and staff, I'm Dr. Julie Brown. I'm a board member of the Danville Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors, and I am also a resident of the Chatham Blair's District. With great pleasure, I present to you our annual report for fiscal year 2016. I think all of you have a copy of this. This year, our annual report theme is different from previous years, focusing on infographics and community. The infographic presentations are the visual representations of the innovative and measurable ways that DPCS serves the citizens in Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville as a preferred provider of top-quality behavioral health, developmental disability, and prevention services. The unique cover of this year's annual report presents the simple formula for success in the services and supports provided by DPCS. It is a mixture of components that match the acronym for the agency, DPCS. The D from Danville mirrors demographics for the 19,162 individuals DPCS served in fiscal year 2016 through its clinical treatment and prevention programs. The P from Pennsylvania mirrors the programs for which the 97 unique programs that are focused upon unlocking each individual's potential for self-determination, empowerment, recovery, resiliency, and health, and the highest possible level of participation in all aspects of community life. The C from community mirrors cast of professionals for the 283 employees through which DPCS serves our citizens. DPCS staff have background educations ranging from 98 individuals with a high school or GED, 41 associate-degreed staff, 94 back-lawiate-degreed staff, 44 master's-degreed staff, one doctoral-degreed staff, and five medical-degreed staff. The S from services mirrors success, defined as a positive impact in the life of the one in five individuals that receive one or more of nearly 100 services from our talented professional staff. The variety and complexity of DPCS's services meet the needs of individuals with a behavioral health disorder, a developmental disability, and those who may just simply be at risk. Tonight, I would like to tell you about a select few of the services offered that are community innovations making a positive impact in the lives of individuals residing in Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville. Our services and community innovations are making a difference for the pregnant mothers and their newborns through age five in our community through the Healthy Families Program. This year marked the 20th anniversary of the Healthy Family Services in Pennsylvania County and Danville. Healthy Families seeks to strengthen the parent-child relationship and emphasizes school readiness, striving to see prenatal families have a healthy pregnancy and delivery, linking families to medical providers, tracking well-baby visits, immunizations, and screenings for developmental delays, perinatal and postpartum depression. Community education through evidence-based programs like Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training or ASSIST, and Mental Health First Aid, MHFA, are making a difference in our community. These training courses together reached 155 individuals in our community through 17 different sessions. ASSIST teaches effective intervention skills while helping to build suicide prevention networks in the community. MHFA teaches how to assist someone experiencing a mental health or substance abuse-related crisis. Topics covered include depression, mood disorders, anxiety, trauma, psychosis, and substance abuse disorders. Our services and community innovations are making a difference through technology for both adults and children in need of medications to assist in their treatment. DPCS provides telepsychiatry to children and adults through two full-time and three contract psychiatrists. Telepsychiatry is a routine visit with the psychiatrist in the privacy of an office through the use of high-quality video conferencing systems, either at the satellite office operated in Gretna or the Hararston Street campus in Danville. Juveniles at WW Moore Juvenile Detention Facility are also seen via telemedicine. DPCS serves 1,280 individuals through telepsychiatry for the fiscal year 2016. Our services and community engagement continue for anyone in crisis. The Danville, Pennsylvania Crisis Intervention Team, widely known as CIT, was developed in partnership with the three local law enforcement agencies and Danville Regional Medical Center. An important part of CIT intervention is having a safe and secure location for individuals in crisis to connect with services. A crisis assessment center, known as the CTAC Office, is located within the emergency room at Danville Regional Medical Center. The CTAC Office is staffed by a skilled clinician and a CIT-trained off-duty officer 12 hours each day. Since opening in October of 2015, the CTAC Office has hosted or facilitated 375 evaluations that allowed a transfer of custody from the on-duty law enforcement officer to the CTAC officer, allowing the officer to return to his or her patrol duties. Also, in fiscal year 2016, DPCS completed construction on Mount Herman Manor. I think many of you have visited that facility. It's a five-bedroom home located on Franklin Turnpike in Pennsylvania County for five individuals with an intellectual disability. Three of them originally resided in Pennsylvania County but lived at Central Virginia Training Center for extended periods of time. Mount Herman Manor is a traditional residential home that allows for a homecoming and life in a typical suburban home with intermediate care facility-level supports to help residents manage their more complex medical needs outside of an institutional setting. Two individuals already live at the home, with the remaining three moving from the training center in a prescribed manner in fiscal year 2017. These are just a few of the nearly 100 unique programs for adults and children operated by DPCS through its Behavioral Health, Developmental, and Prevention Services divisions. In fiscal year 2016, DPCS directly served 19,162 residents of Pennsylvania County and the city of Danville through 159,170 distinct units of service. In closing, on behalf of our Board of Directors, I would like to take this opportunity to thank you for appointing eight members from Pennsylvania County to the Danville, Pennsylvania Community Services Board of Directors. It is our honor and our pleasure and privilege to serve the community in this capacity. We appreciate your confidence, your ongoing support. Our executive director, Jim Beebo, is here to do any heavy lifting if you have any questions this evening. And again, we thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, and Mr. Beebo, thank you for being here tonight as well. Questions, comments?
I have one. How many officers have received the training from law enforcement officers in particular, roughly?
I think it's close to 255. That includes some dispatchers and some private security, all the hospital security guards have received, all the Goodyear security guards have received because they offered the training space. The goal is to have every law enforcement officer trained. We've done, we've reached critical mass, and then most of the officers have, so always in the law enforcement agency. So, we'll continue to offer the training. We offered it three or four times a year for the last couple of years. We'll probably slow back on that a little bit to perhaps two or three a year, excuse me, one or two a year.
And, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Barksdale, if you hadn't been out to the Mount Herman Manor, it is spectacular. But for all you gentlemen that hadn't been that want to go, don't take your wife, because all minds want to do is make changes at home to get up to that standard. So, we do appreciate it very much. That happens to be in my district, and it is a welcome entity in our district. Thank you.
Glad to have you. Makes a great home for five divisions.
Dr. Brown, we thank you for that great report. And, Mr. Beebo, on behalf of the board, just please convey our sincere gratitude to the DPCS employees for the phenomenal work that they do in caring for our residents. Mr. Blackstock?
Thank you all.
This is, these services are something that are near and dear to my heart because I operated several jails. So, I've got a couple of detailed questions. I don't see you often, so I'm going to ask you.
Okay.
I won't get too detailed. I guess, I know the training, well, first of all, the training center in Lynchburg is going to be closed.
Correct.
And I guess my question would be, you have the ability for five individuals at the new manor. Did some money flow from the state to help build that because the training center is closing?
Yes, that's correct. It was funded 58 percent by the state. The rest came from local funds.
And that was because of the closing of the training center itself?
It was specialized targeted housing money to develop the community infrastructure because there are many individuals at the training centers that not only have an intellectual disability diagnosis, but have many multiple medical issues.
Right.
And so, to have a specialized facility that can wrap around them and support them in the community was necessary. And typically, the private sector can't, Julie uses the term "heavy lifting," that's a lot of heavy lifting for a private entity to provide. And so, with us being supported from multiple funding sources, including the state, it was easier for us to pull that off.
Has any surveys been done to, from the current population at the training center to see how many would reside when it's closed that could be brought back into the communities in Danville and Pennsylvania County?
Yes, there are active discharge plans for everybody at all of the training centers. And the one in Lynchburg would be the last one to close. And Danville and Pennsylvania County had a total of about 38 individuals that originally resided in this community. And so, this is the first wave of five that our agency is going to support in the community. There are some individuals at the training center that didn't have that intense level of need that have already returned to the community. At one of our group homes, we took one from the training center, and then some of the private sector providers have.
It makes me feel good that the state, at least, is trying to make some plans.
Absolutely.
The second question I have is the, I know that my law enforcement friends tell me that opium is only, opium use is only rise, especially heroin, which is cheap. And we saw a big decline years ago with HIV infections and things like that with needles, but it's back. And I know it's hitting a lot of communities. Are we seeing a rise here in the county and the city with that, and are we offering any type of treatment for that?
We do offer treatment services if anybody seeks them. Statistically, I don't know why, but there is a bit of a bubble around Danville and Pennsylvania County. And it, coming from the far southwest towards us, it stops in Marksville and Henry County. It's not really trickled into our area yet. Doesn't mean it won't come this way, but it is not a primary drug of abuse in our community. Prescription drugs are the number one abuse drug in our community.
Okay. One other thing.
Okay, go right ahead.
I just.
No, you do it.
Don't blow it.
The reason I ask these questions, what y'all do is so important because if you keep these people out of jails, it costs over $20,000, around between $20,000 and $25,000 a year to house a person in jail. And if you can get some of these people appropriate services, because of the closing down of mental health facilities in the state of Virginia, jails have become a dumping ground for the mentally ill. So, the next, you know, that's a big deal. That money could be used to build schools and all kinds of things here in the state. My question, next question would be about the, you mentioned telepsychiatry, which is, I praise you for using that. It's very economical, it's safe, but you didn't, you mentioned that you were using it over WW Moore and a couple of other places. Do y'all provide any type of mental health telepsychiatry services to the, they call it the Danville Adult Detention Center, the old city farm and the jail in Danville and jail here in Chatham? Do y'all offer any services to those?
We offer services. We do not offer telepsychiatry at this point. In the city jail, they have a physician on contract that takes care of most of the individuals. If the individual has more complex needs that physician is willing to handle, the sheriff's office has been choosing to transport the individual over. We would certainly be open to setting up the facility. It'd just be a matter of having the infrastructure in place to do it.
It would be much cheaper and much safer to do telepsychiatry to jails, to any of the jails and transport them prisons, it's cheaper, too.
I wouldn't disagree with you. I agree. It'd be something we could look into.
I would ask that you do that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's all. I appreciate it. You, thank y'all for the great job you're doing.
Sure. Thank you for your support. You know, you have two of your own are on our board of directors there, Jesse and Bob, keep us on task and make sure we're doing our thing.
Any other comment? Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Doctor. I appreciate what you do, Mr. Beebo. I have some questions, just a couple. I thank you for your service, and I appreciate your outreach. Sadly to say, earlier this year, new at this post, I had a constituent who called me, and we had, he's got a problem, troubled son, drug addiction, and on I could go. And I did not know of this, and I could have referred them right here. I didn't know about it, but I know now. My question is, right here, the age range is served on page 40. I'm just asking a question, I'd like a little insight, health diagnosis of intellectual disability, ages zero to 17, you've got 1,489 served, and I think that's wonderful. And then, 18 through 65, you've got 3,287 served. It's wonderful. Then you get closer to my age group, they drop off. Do they die, or you get state or federal funds or whatever? That's just my thought on that.
That's a great question. I don't know that I could quote you all the statistics. I can tell you some of them. That's why that number drops. The first is that when someone turns 65, they're eligible for Medicare.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to sit there.
And they can typically access more services than us. I mean, we will take all payer sources, and we like individuals who have insurance and resources, but typically, the private sector picks them up, and we carry them more in the case load. There are also statistics that show that folks that have serious mental illnesses tend to live 25 years less than their brother or sister who doesn't have a, so if you have a schizophrenic... So, if you have a schizophrenic and are not schizophrenic, there's 25-year life expectancy between the two of them because of the, not only just because of their mental illness, but they don't access care, they don't engage in society as you or I and Good or I and physicals. It's a very difficult life for them, and so, they tend to have multiple health concerns that shorten their lifespan.
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
I don't think that contributes to all of that number, but that is a significant part.
I feel I'm in between both of those extremes you just pointed out, and I may have a few years left. But thank you so kindly for what you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment? Again, Dr. Brown and Mr. Beebo, we thank you very much, and please convey again our gratitude to the employees.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much for a great presentation.
Thank you. If it's okay, I'll leave the rest of these here. You're welcome.
Okay, and ladies and gentlemen, this is gold, this is worth gold. There are some copies up here, so before you leave, you're certainly welcome to them. Next, we have a presentation from Ms. Lori Moran, who's the Executive Director of the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce, and she's going to provide an update on the Business Service Report for 2015 through 16. Ms. Moran, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Barksdale, and members of the Board of Supervisors, and welcome, Mr. Smith, we're glad to have you in our county. I've been before you for several years now, and certainly want to share with you again the work that we're doing in workforce development as the Chamber. We have the Business Services Contract with the West Peatmont Workforce Investment Board to provide the Business Services Outreach for Danville and Pennsylvania County. As you may be aware, the entire workforce area is Patrick County, Martinsville, Henry County, and Danville and Pennsylvania County. It's our job to work with the public workforce system to represent the voice of business and make sure that our employers are accessing the resources and services that are available to them to help them with their workforce needs. Specifically, we look at areas of recruitment, retention, and training. We look at ourselves as being an outreach of employers and almost an extension of their HR to help them identify ways to be more successful with their workforce efforts. The report that you have in your packet and additional copies are also provided. You'll see some of our numbers from the past year. This past year, we worked with 110 employers in Danville and Pennsylvania County, and through those efforts, identified almost 1,900 job openings in Danville and Pennsylvania County. Those included both part-time and full-time positions. Working with the employers and trying to connect them to job seekers through job fairs, different outreach efforts, we can identify over 400 job placements that were made. We know that number is low, but we depend on the employers to self-report how many of those jobs are filled as a result of our efforts, and some of our, some of our efforts didn't have the reports backed that we were hoping. Since this time, we've also obtained other reports and know that we've had at least a couple of hundred more jobs that were filled as a result of those efforts. I'm not going to go through every aspect of the report, but I do want to hit a couple of highlights. You will see that our community is participating in the Certified Work Ready Community Initiative, and through that, we use the National Career Readiness Certificate to help employers to identify the foundational skills that they're looking for in job seekers, and for job seekers, there's a way for them to assess those foundational skills. We listened to employers, and I say "we," I'm talking about a greater collaborative effort than just the Chamber, but in listening to employers, they were telling us that they were struggling with foundational skills, locating information, reading for information, and applied math, and we started this effort as a region to certify our area for Patrick, Martinsville, Henry, Danville, Pennsylvania, and Halifax Counties. Pennsylvania County this past year became the third community in Virginia to reach Certified Work Ready Community status. Danville is currently at 95% of its goal, but we appreciate the support of the county, the Board of Supervisors, and so many other partners in allowing us to achieve that goal for Pennsylvania County. I also have to give a shout out to Dr. Brown, who was just up here before. She heads up our Dan River Region Workforce Collaborative and has been the one really spearheading that effort for the Certified Work Ready Communities. We've also worked with employers on their training needs and trying to help identify, again, both public and sometimes private resources that are available to help them, whether it's for on-the-job training grants, for customized training, incumbent worker training. We did a lot of work this past year, and I just did some quick calculations that are not in the report, but last year, we know that we were able to bring and secure over $150,000 worth of training, real dollars, to employers in Pennsylvania County, and that's just in the county, to help them with training needs that otherwise, they would have been paying for out of their pocket. So, that was a cost savings for those particular companies, and hopefully, helped them to increase their likelihood of success with new and incumbent workers. Through the Chamber, we do a lot of this work through partnerships. I will never tell you that we do this alone. We do it through a lot of collaboration. We convene meetings with our partners. We have 25 different partners who either have access to resources to help companies or work with companies and their workforce needs. And so, we do this in strong partnership and convening to make sure that our efforts are focused and always focused on the employer who's driving the jobs for this region. And so, let me do a special shout out to the Economic Development Office here in Pennsylvania County, because they are one of our valued partners. We have a close working relationship with Matt Rowan, with Greg Sides, and in the work that we do, we call Matt when we go to see a company and they're talking about a workforce issue, and all at once, we realize it may be greater than just a workforce issue, we communicate with him, and likewise, he calls us when there are companies here in the county that may have a workforce need or companies that he's working with. And that's the kind of relationships and collaboration, I think, that will set us apart from other localities as we look at not only recruiting new companies, but working with our existing employers to expand. It's not about who gets the credit, it's about the employer having what the employer needs, and especially having the workforce that that employer needs. So, I just want to thank Matt and Greg for the support they've given for both the work we do and in many other ways, and I will say, as a totally unrelated sidebar, Matt has been a wonderful, wonderful partner with the Chamber on another effort, and that's working on our tourism effort, and has really stepped up to help us, especially in trying to get some state funding to come down for tourism. So, the partnerships that we have in this community, I believe are second to none. I believe it's what sets us apart, and at the end of the day, I think it's going to be what makes us successful against other regions. There's a lot of detail in this report. I'm not going to bore you tonight by reading it, but I will certainly take any questions that you may have about this.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Moran?
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Moran, we thank you for a great report, and just seeing all the highlights and the narratives in the report just tells the story of just how much assistance the Danville, Pennsylvania County Chamber of Commerce provide to our local businesses, our stakeholders, our citizens as well. So, we thank you very much. Thank you and your staff have our gratitude for all that you all do.
Thank you. And if any of you want to come out tomorrow afternoon from 3:00 to 5:00 over at Danville Community College's RCAT, we're doing a job fair for manufacturers as of this afternoon. We have 14 manufacturing companies that are coming. I believe it's over 120 open jobs that they're hiring for, and that's Danville and Pennsylvania County that are looking for those jobs, and we're going to be standing there because we have OJT funds to help them get those people trained in the on-the-job training grants, so we'll be working with that again tomorrow. So, there are jobs available for people, and it's our goal to help the employers find those qualified applicants and get them trained for those positions. So, if any of you are looking for a job, or you know people who are, send them out to RCAT. We already have, I think it's 180 people who have pre-registered to come to the job fair, so we're expecting a good turnout tomorrow.
What is the time of that again?
3:00 to 5:00 at RCAT.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Okay, item 10, the animal shelter, we pulled that from the agenda. We'll have that updated at a later date. We're now at unfinished business, item 11. The Expenditure Refund for October 2016 has met the 10-day layover. Is there any further discussion? Now, we will have a roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Chairman Barksdale?
Yes. Okay. On the new business, item 12, we have the Expenditure Refund for November 2016 in the amount of $37,123.22. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the expenditure refund in that amount.
Mr. Duggan?
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and this is a 10-day layover.
Mr. Chairman, you mentioned, I think you said 37,123, it's 37,143.
143. Okay, I correct. Okay, thank you.
Two seconds, Mr. Chairman.
I did.
Mr. Davis.
Okay, 12B, Mr. Smitherman, do you have anything you want to add to that?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Generally, this is a reimbursement. We receive a pass-through reallocating funds that are provided to assist with holding illegal immigrants in our city.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a motion? Mr. Warren?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that the Board amend the jail budget and appropriate $629.20 to line item 100-4-033100-5899.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Warren and second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? There are none? All in favor, raise your right hand. And?
It's a roll call, Lou.
Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Mr. Barksdale?
Yes. Item 10, the FM Global Fire Prevention Grant Application. Anything to add, Mr. Smitherman?
This grant fund, these grant funds will be used to purchase lighting and photography equipment for our fire investigators, 100% non-government money that does not require a match.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the $1,953 to be appropriated to the FM Global Fire Prevention Grant. Budget line item.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Barber.
It's a roll call.
Okay, we're just, yeah, we're just getting the motion in a second, okay? Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Haggerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Chairman Barksdale?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Here are item 13, change order on the Pennsylvania County Animal Shelter. Is Mr. Alka here? Mr. Smitherman?
I'll do my best.
You've got it, okay.
My understanding is that we, there's a mandate throughout Virginia regarding how, regarding the pouring of floors or the tight floor that we're required to have in the facility. This design change or mandate came after ours was designed. I understand that the funds required to meet this requirement should be within our current budget, will not require the appropriation of new funds, and that we expect some savings in the current budget as well as some items that may have otherwise been contingency that may not play out. We're not asking for more funds to add to the construction project, we're adding to the change order to add an item that will be contained within the total cost of the new facility.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we change and approve the order of number five in the amount of $14,586.55, and to authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documentation.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Davis and a second by Mr. Blackstock. Any discussion? There are none?
I just think it's important that we point out, and Mr. Smitherman did touch on it, I read this in detail, because change orders always concern me, but this is a change order that makes sense, because the state changed the regulations as far as the requirements for the facility itself after we set out the plans to be did. So, it wouldn't make sense for us to build a facility that was not meeting the basic guidelines and requirements that the state put out. We don't want to be behind the curve when a door opens, so it makes sense. I also like the fact that we're making up the savings in other areas, so we don't have to reappropriate extra money. So, good job out there.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Warren?
What I read, it relates to isolated animals was the primary reason for this, that there is requirements to keep them completely isolated so they didn't infect other animals that may be there, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. Any other comments? Discussion, okay? All in favor, raise your right hand, and the vote is unanimous. Thank you. Item 14, the Approval of the Vision Statement and Strategic Priorities for Pennsylvania County. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the Pennsylvania County Strategic Priorities dated October 20, 2016. It's contained in the packet.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion?
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman, and it really relates to Mr. Smitherman, our county administrator. Would you like to have more time to review this, tweak this, since you just came on board before we move forward with approving it as is?
I appreciate that, I appreciate that question. At the end of the day, the Board has spent a good deal of time in this document, and if this document presently reflects the way the Board feels at this given time, I think it's important that we move forward. I also want to say that it won't be the last time you see it. These things are a baseline, I think, to build an organization, our performance around, and we will come back to this, or it would be my request, that we come back to this on an annual basis. So, I don't think there's any harm adopting it now. I think the acknowledgement that this is a fluid document, and that come October 20 of 17, we may want to change some things, but for now, gives me a great North Star to keep us moving toward in the interim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Barber?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Smitherman just answered some of the questions I had asked legal counsel about approving his statement and some of these plans, because some of them are suggesting employment positions, but Mr. Hunt said that this would be an outline, we would have to come back to the Board. We're not actually approving this per se.
This is just aspirational, and this doesn't-
Right, because it was confusing to me that, that I was going to make sure that was what we're voting on, is that correct?
We have flexibility.
Okay.
I think Mr. Smitherman really captured it all.
Right.
Any other discussion, though? Okay, are you ready to vote? All in favor, raise your right hand, and it's a unanimous vote. Thank you. Item 14, the West Peatmont Planning District Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. It says, we have Mr. Smitherman and Mr. Sides either.
I'm going to cut to the chase and call Mr. Sides.
Okay, Mr. Sides, you've got it.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Just in terms of review, I brought this information to you at a previous meeting where we talked a little bit about the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy that West Peatmont Planning District Commission puts together annually, and I just wanted to bring you a copy of the document from a prior year to show that it's much more than the project list that we're voting on. This document includes overall views of the local economy, of the assets, the resources within the area. There's also a basic strength, weakness, opportunity, and threat analysis, so there's a whole lot more going on, but, but one of the key parts of this plan that the localities, the Boards need to support- the localities, the boards need to support, is this priority project list that's included in your packet. And at a prior meeting, I brought to you the, the list of last year and indicated to you that I'd be involving Mr. Rowe, our Economic Development Director, in his review of the list, to make sure that it reflects his interest in, in his priorities. And I'll let Matt talk about some of the additions that he's made. We did make a couple of revisions that are noted in red in the board package.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, board members, I'm going to be very brief. You know, Mr. Sides and I, we did sit down for a considerable period of time, and Mr. Sides went over as far as what they've done in the past, and it really, as you gentlemen know, Mr. Sides has tremendous knowledge as far as, you know, he really initiated a lot of these projects. The only real change that I made is with the Southern Virginia Multimodal Park coming online and some activity going on with, with that, some timely activity. I went ahead and put that in there with regards to engineering, construction, of infrastructure development for the industrial park, and of course, we're working with, you know, private parties on that as well. And then another change was just updating some of the things dealing with the Cloverdale Regional Industrial Park. We're in Pennsylvania County and Halifax and VIR, you know, we're all working together on possible ways of extending some utilities out there to them as well. So once again, just trying to show that regionalism, but frankly, I think Mr. Sides and the county have done a great job of what you already had, and it was really just a matter of simply going in and just tweaking some things with where things currently stand now, so my hat's off to Mr. Sides.
Thanks, Matt. The, the second revision that he mentioned in terms of Cloverdale, that was an existing project in there that involved Pennsylvania County and Halifax County working together and associated with VIR. And the addition that we've made into the current plan is based on an interest by the, the Pennsylvania County Service Authority to include specific language about a potential interconnection of water sewer between the two counties. So we took an existing entry and modified it slightly to accomplish that new interest. I just want to, again, to summarize and kind of give you some comfort that you're not appropriating the numbers that are in this plan tonight, you're not planning to spend the millions of dollars that you see in these columns. This is merely a list of projects that we would like to see accomplished for economic development in the county, and it allows us to be able to qualify for federal funding in the future. By being on this list, a project is eligible for funding. The, the numbers on the right-hand column are our best estimates at the time, but again, you're not committing those funds tonight.
Does anybody have any questions or comments from Mr. Sides or Mr. ... Okay, Mr. Hunt, Mr. Hagerman?
Ladies and gentlemen and members of the board, I was kind enough to, well, I was actually kind enough to, or Mr. Eric County Administrator, actually took a few minutes extra tonight to, to talk about these very items that we were looking at on our agenda. And later, Mr. Sides came over and we just, we talked about it, or mostly he talked about it, and we went over, he told me some other items. Yeah, I, I think this is, this is a, a great thing, Mr. Sides. The only problem I have with this at all is, is the fact I would like for you gentlemen to, anything like this to come forward again, take more time to go over it in even more detail than what it, what it is here, because that a way, I certainly wouldn't have had to come up and, even though I'd read it before. And, and that's, that's, that's the only problem I have, and, and I had received some calls from, as a matter of fact, I got the, I got a copy of some information that other people sent me wanting to know about it. I don't know where they got this information, but it seems to be true, so that I, and I, I really do not like having to, have to come to our county administrator, especially since this is this break-in night, so. But anyway, I have, I have no, no problem with that, and, but if, I, I would ask this of, of y'all, that if you are going to put us through this to keep us up to date, really good. Thank you.
That was, you know, the thought we had about bringing it to you at a, at a previous meeting to give everybody some time, but something else that you may want to think about is, you know, we did have some discussions maybe in the future about convening a meeting of the Economic Development Committee and letting that committee digest this list further. So whatever suits the board, we'll be glad to do.
Mr. Barber?
Mr. Sides, you made a comment. If, if a project is on this list now, does that mean it qualifies for federal funding or could qualify for federal? How did...
Correct. It could qualify for federal funding, and, and if we're going to apply up on Economic Development Administration Grant, it, the project needs to be on this list. So therefore, we put the projects on this list that we anticipate may, we may apply up on in the future.
Okay, so, so what I'm saying is if it's on the list, it gives it a leg up versus a project, okay?
Correct.
Because there was one caught my eye on here, something we're working on in the county.
Mr. Sides?
Mr. Hagerman?
Mr. Barkstern? Can, could this money be obtained and used by, used by the county without the board supervisors knowing?
Oh, no, sir, no, sir. These projects that are on this list, like I say, this makes them eligible, but we would, if we chose one and we wanted to do an EDA grant, we would have to bring that grant to the board of supervisors. You would have to authorize us to make the application. And then if the grant was approved, you, you'd see it again before any, you know, any money was appropriated. So, yeah, you'll have plenty of looks.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Barber, were you done, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Davis?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, on this list, let me ask you the question we had talked about last meeting and the meeting before that, about that water line. I may be out of line here, but that water line that I plan to, I don't want to say pipeline, because I don't want national security in here, but the water line that we had discussed coming up twenty-nine, that we were talking about and what it's going to cost, do some research on that. Would that be listed in here, or is it under a different heading?
Right, we, we've got countywide infrastructure listed in here as one of the projects. So that's written broad enough to allow us to investigate the whole concept of interlinking utilities along the Route twenty-nine corridor.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. So I like the way you muddied the lines on that to get grant money. Good, thank you, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the proposed Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy Priority Projects List and authorize the county administrator to send the list and required EDA, submit a letter to the West Piedmont Planning District Commission to be incorporated into the regional two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen CEDS update.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Blackstock and a second by Mr. Barber. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand. And the vote is unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sides, and thank you, Mr. Rowe. Okay, I don't think we missed anything. We're down to board announcements. Mr. Warren, we will start with you, sir.
I'd just like to thank our guests that showed up tonight, Mr. Maboe and Dr. Brown and Ms. Moreau. It's always good to see you. Moran, I'm sorry. It's always good to see you. And would like to take the time to tell Mr. Smitherman how happy I am that he's here. I think the county is in good hands, and I very much look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. Battery's gone out of this, I, it's not working, so anyway.
I want to concur what Mr. Warren said on all you guys that are representing your departments. Thank you ever so kindly, especially the economic development, the infrastructure that goes into place here in Pennsylvania County. I think we've got a great staff. But my, one of the things I would warn, I want to warn you guys that surf the internet, that have contracts on the internet, my internet service was hacked. Yahoo was hacked, I think about a billion people, they tried to access my eBay account, which they got through PayPal account, fortunately, they didn't get to my checking account. So I'm, I'm saying that to say this, you need to update constantly, rather often, your passwords on your accounts, so I would warn you to do that, because they're, they're really attacking America. And so if they're doing it here, what are they doing about the national security? We worry about that. Second thing is, is I, I would like to thank the board for the opportunities and the things that we're doing for Pennsylvania County. I feel, feel that we've got a great board that, that are putting things together and that are in support one another. I want to thank you guys for that. I want to thank Matt for the job that he does, as well as Mr. Sides, as well as the others that are in place. Thank you, Mr. Smitherman, and I do apologize for not being there today at five o'clock. Can't be everywhere at one time, so anyway, I do thank you and welcome you aboard. And, Mr. Chairman, I believe that's going to be about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Scares?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to welcome Mr. Smitherman on board and looking forward to great things. Secondly, I attended the Fire and Rescue Association Christmas Dinner last week, and it was outstanding food and a great fellowship with the volunteers from all across the county. And one thing I would urge everyone out there is, it really took me aback when they, they got into the meeting and started talking about the fundraising and all the issues with where they get their funding from. So I would urge all of you, when you get your little flyer in, in the mail asking for a donation, or if you see a stew that's scheduled by one of the fire departments or raffle, please support these guys. They are an all-volunteer force, and, and their dedication, they deserve our support. So anytime you go out there and buy an eight-dollar or five-dollar thing of stew or a raffle ticket, please go out there and support these guys, because they really are doing a lot for our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scares. Mr. Blackstock?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming tonight. I especially thank the people from the DPCS for their presentation and information. I really am impressed. Our Chamber of Commerce here in Danville, Pennsylvania County is second to none. Laurie, thank you. I see Mrs. Bowman, our former chairman, out there. Thank you for coming. Also see Will Pace, a new council person, councilman here in Chatham, so a lot of interest, and I'm excited about the Christmas season, and I hope we all get into the Christmas spirit and march into the new year with a lot of optimism here in Pennsylvania County and getting off on the right foot, work together as a, as a group, and make good things happen for the citizens of that county.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Hagerman?
Yes, Mr. Barkstern? Talking about, and talking about the stews and the suits and fish fries and so forth from our fire departments and so forth. The Gretna Fire Department had some great stews. I veed it for three days, and my wife finally took it away from me. But anyway, it's, it's, it is, it's, it's a great, it's great to at least spend a few dollars to help them out and, and enjoy good food also. So I want to commend the Gretna Volunteer Fire Department. They do a super job, and I think, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman. Mr. Barber?
I'd like to concur with the rest of the board, sir. Welcome, Mr. Smitherman. After a long search, I, I really felt like you was the right guy, and I'm glad to have you aboard. And I think about the team we got in the county now, we got a very good team to move forward. I'm very excited about it. I think we got one of the best teams we've ever had, so I want to welcome you aboard and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. I too want to echo my thanks and gratitude for the presenters, Dr. Julie Brown, along with Mr. Bebo, the executive director of the DPCS, Ms. Laurie Moran, Danville, Pennsylvania County, Chamber of Commerce. Also want to recognize Mr. Shorter, who's the Pennsylvania County Treasurer, and hello, Ms. Bowman again. Ms. Bowman was on the board last year this time, but just a few days, I guess, left, or weeks. She was the former supervisor of the Chatham Blairs District, and congratulations to Mr. Pace. Good to see him at our, at our meetings, and we thank all of you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. Mr. Smitherman, we're on our way. You know, we, we took a, that was big, one big step for man and a week, one leap for, however they say, for mankind, but thank you. Welcome aboard, sir, and we, we, we will support you. You have our support. Okay, any announcements from you, sir?
I just want to welcome Mr. Smitherman, and my door's always open. I look forward to working with you to better this county. I'll be your Robin to your Batman, and I think we do, I think we do have a great team that's assembled, and I look forward to the Christmas optimism that Supervisor Blackstock expressed. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Okay. Anything, Mr. Smitherman?
I'd just say what I've said to many folks already is, I knew it was a good place to come, and the conversations I had with each of you individually and collectively told me that you were ready to move the county, and I am here in service of that. But the thing that I've really enjoyed, and I want to assure you that, that time is well spent with Clarence. Mr. Monday and I have spent a tremendous amount of time together the last three days, and we've got two more weeks of it. And he is showing me at a very fast clip and providing me at a very fast clip the education I need to be up and running very quickly for you. And he's taking it very seriously, he's being very thorough, he is being very frank, and I appreciate the time you've allowed us to spend together. It's much, much, much more productive than you can imagine. And the second half of that is, that's just further confirmed to me how great the organization is and how much better we can be. The employees under Mr. Monday's direction the last two and a half years have achieved a lot of stuff in a short amount of time, and I've just been pleasantly surprised around every corner with how much work they've done and how ready they are for the next steps, and I look forward to being part of that, and I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're ready to go into closed session. Mr. Hunt, can you read the...
We, we have two closed session items tonight, sixteen A and sixteen B. I'll read the agenda topics, and then we'll need a motion in a second.
Okay, go right ahead, sir.
So sixteen A, discussion of the disposition of publicly held property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body authority, two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A three, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, subject matters, Project Turtle. The purpose is discussion of the disposition of publicly held property. Sixteen B, discussion concerning prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries in interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community, legal authority, two point two thirty-seven eleven A five, Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, subject matter, project motion, purpose, discussion of memorandum of understanding, and please let the record reflect, assuming there's an affirmative motion to go to closed session, that staff would like, in addition to Mr. Smitherman and myself, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Sides to join us in the back for these two matters.
Okay. Mr. Barber?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we go into closed session.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and call the roll?
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Chairman Barkstern?
Yes, thank you.
We're in closed session. Be it resolved that at the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on December fifth, two thousand sixteen, the board hereby certifies by recorded vote that the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the code, he shall so state prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the minutes of the board. I will now do a roll call vote. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
Chairman Barksdale?
Yes.
It's unanimous, 7-0. Do we have any motions from closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve and remove you in regards to project motion and authorize Matt Rowe to sign the appropriate documents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, we're going to do a roll.
Let's just do a show of hands.
Show of hands. All in favor, raise your right hand. And the vote is unanimous.
Motion to go, Derek.
Motion to go, Derek. Take it. Mr. Barber and Mr. Sides, second.